Good afternoon, welcome to Committee of the Hall for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. May we have a roll call, please, Kim?
Thank you, Council President. Council President Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any changes to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next up, approval of minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Payment of bills, may I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
All right, motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. All right, our first item for tonight, resolution recognizing the Village at Single Creek Neighborhood Council. Tracy Taylor, actually with two neighborhoods, two presentations, welcome.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. My name is Tracy Taylor. I am communications coordinator here at the city. I'm bringing forward to you two more new neighborhoods that would like to be a part of our neighborhood program. So with that said, I would like to show you on the map here where the two new neighborhoods are. It's Village at Single Creek, they have 42 households, and then Sunrise Meadows also coming in at 28 households. If you remember back on September 17th, I brought forward and talked to you about 52 registered neighborhoods in the city of Kent when I started in this position. I brought you additional three. I'm bringing you these two more, which takes us now to 57. So we are continuing to grow here in our neighborhood program. With Sunrise Meadows, the total homes in this neighborhood are 28. They are single-family homes, more so, I would say, the demographic lies about millennials. We're looking at the younger generation here. They have a lot of great kids and a lot of activities. They like to do a lot of fundraising and they do have their annual neighborhood potluck. Also coming in is the Village at Single Creek. Now, they are 21 households. They are also all single-family homes and their activities and their fundraising are National Night Out. They have been regulars with National Night Out and they do have an annual fall meeting. The Village at Single Creek is an interesting neighborhood. They did not, or they were unaware of our neighborhood program here in the city. They found out a lot about it when they were invited to join the Meridian Villa Estates Drinks in the Driveway that we had on August 29th, which brought that whole night for Drinks in the Driveway, a total of 66 residents, which were really interesting, great questions, a lot of engagement, a lot of fun, actually. So I'm really excited that they want to be a part of our neighborhood program. What you're seeing here is our current registered neighborhoods. You can see them all outlined. Again, we have not had an opportunity yet to add in the three that I presented back in September, but I think by the end of October, we'll get all of them back in the neighborhood map up to speed. So again, with the registered neighborhood program with the benefits, this builds relationships here within our city teams and our city leadership. It enhances our sense of community and of course, it gives you access to city neighborhood mini matching and communications grants. And of course, it's a two-way communication with city leaders. Everything comes through me and then I facilitate that conversation between the city leaders and the neighborhoods. Again, the reason why we encourage the neighborhood councils is it's more so to identify the needs and the interests of the neighborhood and developing these neighborhood action plans like block watches, obviously the grants, and then of course, we get to make recommendations for the neighborhood improvements. And so, once you're recognized, you do get access to those neighborhood grant funds. Case in point, we are working with the Neighborhood Misty Meadows. They came forward with a matching grant where they wanted to remove some trees and replant some trees to beautify their neighborhood. So it's really encouraging and really exciting to see these neighborhoods really start to get more interest, especially after COVID. And of course, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those now. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions or comments? Tracy, what is the cross streets for the Sunrise Meadows neighborhood? I missed that.
Um, Council President, I will have to get back to you on that. I did not.
Maybe on the map, we can go look again, please.
Let me see.
It's awfully small.
So it's more so, it's just on the southeast side of Clark Lake.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, I will read the motions. First, we'll read it for Single Creek Neighborhood. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2081, recognizing the Village at Single Creek Neighborhood Council, supporting its community-building efforts and conferring on it all opportunities offered by the city's neighborhood program.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero, thank you. Okay, I'll read the second one.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2082, recognizing the Sunrise Meadows Neighborhood Council, supporting its community-building efforts and conferring on it all opportunities offered by the city's neighborhood program.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you, Tracy. It's good to see you. All right, next up, we have ECD, Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President. We have three items tonight. We're going to start with Michelle Wilmot and an appointment to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Michelle Wilmot, City of Kent Economic Development and also staff liaison to Kent's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And tonight, I'm here to bring to you a recommendation and nomination from the Kent's Lodging Tax Committee members for the reappointment of Gaila Haas to serve on the committee. Gaila's term expires at the end of this year and she, when she was first brought to the committee, she was fulfilling the unexpired term of her predecessor. Just letting you know, Gaila is the executive director of the Kent Downtown Partnership and brings lots of activities and community events and what have you to Kent and the community overall. Most recently with the Cajun Fest and the salsa night that the KDP hosted for the first time this year. She has expressed strong interest in staying on the committee. She is able to do so for two more terms according to our bylaws that we have in place. Just letting you know too, by the way of state law, the state actually prescribes the makeup of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and what it notes is that those committee members must be equal to those that actually help supply the lodging tax funds. So that would be hoteliers, people that operate hotels or bed and breakfasts. And then the other half of the committee members are made up of those that would be eligible to use those lodging tax funds. So that is my request of you all this evening. And while I'm at it, I'll just let you know too, that today, the Lodging Tax Committee opened up its grant application process for the month of October. It will open until midnight on October 31st. And this is for those organizations that look to bring business or leisure travel events and activities to the community to support and enhance our local economy. So the committee will then review those grant applications likely in November and bring those recommendations back to you in December. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Any questions? Okay, with no questions, I will read the motion. I move to appoint Gaila Haas to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for a three-year term starting on January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2027. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will you need a second first?
Oh, sorry.
I will second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass, motion passes seven to zero, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And then next up, we have a presentation from Kristin on our comprehensive plan. The, so this is an ordinance amending Title 15. Oh, I'm sorry, Lindsay. Ordinance amending Title 15 of the Kent City Code to address behavioral health facilities.
Hi, Council, I'm Lindsay Walker, Planner, ECD. So thanks for joining us today. After sharing our proposed code amendments with Land Use and Planning Board, internal staff, legal, and the public, we finalized everything for code adoption. This presentation will conclude our discussions about behavioral health facilities. Land Use and Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend council adopt these amendments. We had one public comment during that hearing. We're here tonight with a final update before you take action. So we've created a project website and published a survey from August 21st to September 9th. And I'm excited to announce that we got a lot of responses. So within that timeframe, there were 423 total visits to our website. Out of 270 visitors to our survey, 140 members of the community participated in that survey. I felt the responses helped confirm that we've been on the right track and having the right discussions. And out of those 140 responses, we really only had about four participants who weren't supportive of these actions. We left areas open for comment and had a lot of feedback from the community. And I think it's powerful that over half the survey participants did state that they knew someone who could benefit from these facilities. So 30% of the people had either never heard of these facilities or knew very little about them, while 14% knew a lot about these facilities. That left 56% that somewhat familiar or had heard of these facilities by another name. When we looked at who we heard from, about 58% were female and 31% were male. While 91% of the survey participants were white, we did get feedback from many residents with different ethnic backgrounds. We also gathered feedback from members of our Human Services Board and Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Board. 18 participants were under 45 years old, while 111 were over 45 years old. So knowing we last met, some of us were uncertain about the two distances for a school separation buffer and you will ask for further discussion with the community and with experts. From there, we followed up with Kent Police, members of the Human Services Board, and the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Board. Kent Police supported the buffers and said larger buffers were important for elementary-age students. From the responses received from members of the Human Services Board and DEIB, it was equally split between that 500-foot buffer and that 880-foot buffer. So we received multiple comments from the public survey with a balance between the community recognizing the need for these services and wanting to better understand onsite security and safety precautions. After these conversations, staff recommends the 880-foot buffer for adult facilities, while youth facilities would not have a separation requirement. So this map shows the schools in dark purple. The pink and yellow areas would be within the separation buffer, leaving those orange areas for a facility to locate. The orange areas include about 650 parcels. You can see it's spread throughout the city. So the ordinance includes all the proposed definitions, consistent with the WAC when available. We are adding four new terms. We're defining three existing terms that we already use within our code and we're revising one term for clarifying purpose. While opioid treatment programs haven't allowed within our code since 2016, the Blake Fix in 2023 designated that opioid treatment programs are considered essential public facilities and updated how local jurisdictions could regulate them. This kicked off Phase 1 of this project and as we updated our regulations to comply with state law. Phase 2 started in March as we further explored additional locations for opioid treatment programs and other behavioral health facilities. So opioid treatment programs are included within our service land use table. We've expanded them to be allowed within the CM zones as well as added a hospital use to our service land use table for clarifying purposes. These are represented with a C for conditional use. We updated the boundaries within the existing industrial zone to remove the portions south of 167th based on feedback from Land Use and Planning Board. The new map is shown on the top with the old map crossed out on the bottom. In our amendments, opioid treatment programs may expand into the CM zones with the condition that they must front Pacific Highway South or Central Avenue South. So the CM boundaries are shown in red and the parcels that do not touch those main roadways are crosshatched. These maps highlight local businesses to help define that area. As a reminder, enhanced service facilities ER are long-term facilities that provide support and services, while intensive behavioral health treatment facilities have a shorter length of stay but provide more specialized help. We added both facilities to our land use table. As you can see, enhanced service facilities are the only ones proposed within any residential districts based on recommendations from Land Use and Planning Board as well as our public survey. All proposals do require a conditional use permit. The ordinance includes the full verbiage, but these are the conditions that are proposed to be applied to all community-based behavioral health facilities. I want to call out that we did add language to specifically prohibit the use of illegal drugs. And while we know that's already a law, we have similar codes for other uses and we added it here based on the feedback from our survey. The ordinance has more details about all the development standards such as setback, parking, and design review. And as you may recall, opioid treatment programs as well as inpatient behavioral health facilities are considered essential public facilities. So we're making changes to our code to recognize that there are many types of community-based behavioral health facilities as licensing and the facilities continue to emerge. So essentially, if someone is proposing a behavioral health facility that is not included in our land use code, this could be amended to clarify that the permit process as an essential public facility. So this concludes my presentation. Staff recommends you approve the ordinance provided today and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you. I like what I saw. I'm just curious, when you say "operation plan," what did that look like? Because that could be anything from A to Z. So do you have a concept, mindset, what an operation plan for somebody to bring to you?
Absolutely. So the operation plan is a state requirement. So we're essentially asking that whatever they give to the state to show how they're operating, how they're handling, you know, any complaints, concerns, staffing, that's all going to be included with their application materials. So we're on the same page as the state.
Is this a form that the state require you to fill out or that's something that you?
They have forms to fill out. The actual operational plan tends to be like a 15 to 20-page narrative on how they're actually handling every aspect of the facility.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Other questions? No other questions, I'll read the motion. I move to adopt Ordinance Number 4498, amending Title 15 addressing behavioral health facilities as presented by staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Lindsay. Okay, next, we have a comp plan presentation. This is going to be on the Shoreline Element with Kristin Haldsworth.
Good evening, Council. It's great to be with you. Tonight, I'm providing an update on the Shoreline Element. This is one of those required elements and it's a little bit interesting because it's required, but we also have something called the Shoreline Master Program, which you may have seen if you were on council in 2019. So the Shoreline Element works together with that plan. So tonight, we're just going to go over what the requirements are and then discuss the draft goals and policies and what's coming up next as we get into the actual draft. So a quick reminder, we are at the corner. As of next Friday, our draft will be released out into the world and off to all of the different agencies, the county, the PSRC, and the state for additional comments and feedback. So we are rounding the corner on that very soon. A reminder, we have our introduction and then each element that helps support our vision and guiding principles and vice versa. The last element that I'll be bringing to you all is the climate element and that'll be at the next workshop. So an overview, right now, our Shoreline Element identifies the shorelines of jurisdiction in Kent. I'm going to show a map to show where they are, just so you can have a mental picture of what we're talking about. And then it also includes goals and policies directly imported from the Shoreline Master Program. So we have that 2019 document. The interesting thing about it is it kind of pick and chose what it chose to move in. So it's an incomplete narrative about where our decision-making is. And so it has these four buckets, environmental designation, general policies, shoreline modification, and that should say shoreline restoration, I'm sorry, it says modification twice. But it has basically four broad topics of what to do under those scenarios. And that's, it really acts not only as a policy guide, but also as a regulatory document that we use, whether it's our own city projects or other development that's privately initiated. So shorelines in Kent have very specific definitions from the state. And so when we identify that, you can see the areas that are qualifying as shorelines of the state within our Kent jurisdiction are listed on the right. The map in the middle has red indicating where it's within Kent's boundaries and a pinkish color where it's outside of Kent's boundaries but within our planned annexation areas. So near Lake Fenwick, for example, we have some in red where it's within our city and then we share that jurisdiction on the other side. And then within that, it's not just whether it is or it isn't a shoreline. Then we also have functional classifications to say what are appropriate uses in that facility. So it could be that it's really designated to be for natural environment and wetlands. Other areas may be for residential uses. Others could be for more higher-intensity uses, especially if you think along the Green River and areas where the industrial valley is. A lot of that industry happened before the shoreline regulation started. And so basically, what the Shoreline Management Program does is it regulates use of these waters for environmental protection and also enjoyment by humans and, I guess, other species, as well as recognizing compatible uses. And so really, all of that is in our 2019 plan. What we decided to do for the element, instead of having a little bit of a mishmash of we took some but not all of it over, because the Shoreline Master Plan, Master Program is 160-some-odd pages. Instead of copying that all in and then risking having discrepancies as we update the plan, because the SMP has to be updated in 2029 again, what we did is we said, we're going to remove and repeal all of those goals and policies. They will stand in that functional document and we're going to be more consistent with the format, similar to what we've done with the TMP and the Park and Open Space Plan, where there's more specifics in the functional implementing document. When you go up the higher level in the comprehensive plan, it's more broad about the goals of how we should be viewing our shoreline elements, how we should be updating the plan. And so what we include are four new goals, really that focus on administration of the program for protecting shoreline, ensuring that we have appropriate development and compatibility, implementing our policies and regulations. Basically, how do we do that? And then the fourth one is engagement around this topic, both as we move forward in updating the plan as well as when we have specific shoreline permits that come in, how we interact with either a developer or a builder or someone who may be concerned about it. So the changes look substantial because it's a whole repeal and replace, but it's actually more of following that structure that we committed to at the beginning of the process. So with that, we have several meetings coming up to discuss the draft plan. As I mentioned, we have the climate element and then we will be at Land Use and Planning Board refreshing our minds in advance once the draft element, or the draft plan is out to prepare for an upcoming hearing. We also have on October 30th, a community advisory group celebration. I will send a separate email. I keep meaning to do that to invite you all, if you'd like to join, to celebrate the release of the draft plan and where we're going with implementation. So with that, then we move into hearings. You are going to have several hearings related, so this is your spoiler alert. It's not just the comprehensive plan. We also have our annual budget process with CIPs that need to be folded into this. We have our annual updates for impact fees. We have some zoning code amendments. So there's a couple things that your November and December agendas are going to look quite full, but they're all really interrelated. So just wanted to give you a heads up, we're not putting new things on in a rapid manner. It's just the way that we'll do the adoption schedule. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lormer. Now we have Parks. Councilmember Scholl, please.
Thank you, Madam President. We just have one item tonight, and we have Brian Higgins here to talk about the, what was formerly known as the Penguin Lot.
Thank you. Good evening, Brian Higgins. You're Parks Planner with the Parks Department. Okay. Okay, that's strange. I saved it as a PDF. Okay, that's perfect. You can start right there. So just to refresh your memory, these are the two lots that are right over here at the corner of Meeker and Second. So they've kind of been in the state for probably longer than I've worked here at the city. So you can go ahead and go to the third one now, Kim. Thanks. Basically, the scope of work is going to look to remove all the concrete that's on this space and install a slight, kind of a crush rock path goes kind of across the middle. And then we'll probably put in a couple picnic tables there, and then on either side of the crush rock path, there is going to be some grass. And these temporary permits, we just want to do to clean up the area kind of while we're working on planning for like long-term development of the park. That's kind of the quick summary. If anybody has any real specific questions, I can certainly answer them.
Why crush rock? Why are we breaking that concrete to put a crush rock in?
Well, kind of what we need is a nice, smooth surface, and if you ever looked at that concrete right now, that's, it's very uneven for walking. And so these, the crush rock is a great temporary solution to kind of while we're planning for a more permanent solution here.
And do we know what the permit solution will look like yet?
No. No, that'd be something that we'd be working on in the future.
Okay.
And Brian, the crush rock is just for the walkway. The rest would be lawn.
Just be for the walkway, yeah. So.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. So it'd be crush, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry. So the pathway right here kind of starts at the corner.
Yep.
And as you come across here, if you ever sit over there and watch people use this lot, this is how they use it, right? They kind of come from the back of Kearslon Park, and they walk right over to the corner. Also, we have a little crush rock path going along the building here because people use that to go over to the other restaurants there in town. So that's the extent of the crush rock. Sorry, I should have explained that.
Okay, and another part is going to be grass?
This is the grass here on either side of it.
Okay. I don't make sense. I was pretty much rock everywhere.
No, 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 not crush rock everywhere.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
Council President, Fincher.
Thank you. Have you, has it been decided yet? I realize you have to come up with all the designs and plans. Will it still stick with the space theme or maybe something totally different?
Yeah, we don't know yet. I think that would kind of hinge on some future outreach that we do with the community before we kind of move into any formal plans there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brian?
No, just a comment. I'm very excited to see this happening.
We are too.
Okay, I will read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a Public Works agreement with LW Sunstrom, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thanks so much, Brian. Back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scholl. Next up, we have Public Works. Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to hear from Christina Nef about the Boeing Rock Recreation Habitat Enhancement Grant.
Afternoon, everyone. I'm here to request acceptance for two different cooperative watershed management grants that were awarded to our two restoration projects on the river from King County Flood Control District and give some updates on where we're at on both of them. So first up is, as mentioned, the one I've spoken on here before, the Boeing Rock Recreation and Habitat Enhancement. And for refresher here, this is the project area. It's between South 200th and South 212th Street. It's south of the Two Friends Fishing Hole, Three Friends Fishing Hole, sorry, on the east bank of the river, and it's downstream of the Lower Russell Levy Project that had been completed previously. So the goal of this project is to take advantage of some opportunities that are provided by the levy that was set back previously here to balance the needs of the recreational users in the park and for some habitat for salmon. We're partnering with the Parks Department to kind of optimize the area for both of those uses. So incorporating large wood habitat structures and alcoves on the riverbank, riparian plantings for shade, removing invasives, and some of the existing bank armoring that are found along here. We're increasing the connection to the floodplain for habitat improvement and to increase some flood storage along this reach. And this is done also providing amenities for passive recreation in the area and a connection to the river for park users here, maintaining a secondary soft-surface trail alongside the Green River Trail, have views and at least one access point to the river for park users here. So the project has been supported by YR9 and the State Recreation and Conservation Office, including a couple of previously awarded grant funds from both the Salmon Recovery Funding Board and King County Parks Levy. So with those funds, we have a draft feasibility review that's been prepared for us by Herrera, analyzing the previous design that had been several years ago and working through some development of alternatives currently and looking at iterations of that. We've organized a habitat work group that includes members of YR9 Implementation Technical Committee and Muckleshoot Tribal Fisheries to receive some input on those designs, and those meetings continue as we develop the alternatives. So the CWN grant today, accepting this grant would get us through a significant portion of the design. It would support the admin of the project, the 65% plans and specifications and cost estimate, some site assessments needed to support that, permits and middles, and continuing to coordinate with the Habitat Work Group and other interested parties. So the project has been awarded $627,690 with no match required, and we anticipate the 65% design to be completed by September 2027.
Thank you very much, Kristine. Any questions? Yes.
I just want to say, great job to you and your team for getting us money and no match. That's great.
Anything else? Because it's very possible without grants, this work or the next one also, that we wouldn't be able to do these. So I will go ahead and read the motion. Let me see, I think I went a page too far. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the King County Flood Control District Cooperative Watershed Management Grant Agreement in the amount of $627,690 for the Boeing Rock Recreation Habitat Enhancement Project, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Director of Public Works and Parks and City Attorney.
Second. She's seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to again thank the YR9 and the Flood Control District for continuing to pick projects in Kent. We are very fortunate, and for once, South King County and Kent benefit greatly from money from the Flood Control District for all of the projects that not only provide flood control but also have multi-benefit projects. So very grateful for that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we will be getting that, some of that design work done. Next, you're going to talk about Habitat Area A on the Lower Russell, another grant agreement.
Yep, so next up, Habitat Area A, which was also awarded the Cooperative Watershed Management Grant. It was part of, this project was originally part of King County's Lower Russell Levy Project. So you can see in this photo, there's some of the work that was completed kind of around the project area that we're talking about here. So it's between the new levy and the river in the GRNA. It's on the northern boundary of Van Doren's Landing Park. It's, so it's just upstream of 212th and the Boeing Rock Project that was taken out. The Green River Trail kind of crosses through the project area. So this project, it's a really great opportunity to add off-channel habitat to the Green River and add a significant amount of flood storage. So the project will add additional habitat by grading lower elevations to reconnect the floodplain, provides slower areas of water off the main channel for rearing habitat for salmon. It will incorporate large wood structures and riparian plantings to provide shade and reduce water temperatures. This project was also previously awarded funds from the Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Program and an earlier round of the CWM funding. And with those, we have completed a feasibility review of the previous design that was from King County. We have draft alternatives which we're refining, and we've restarted the Habitat Work Group discussions that were originally organized by King County. And as mentioned, both Boeing Rock and Habitat A have gotten a lot of support between these two projects. The City of Kent was awarded more than 20% of the funding recommended for high-priority capital projects, habitat projects by YR9 this year, so we're grateful for this. So for this round of funds, this would get us through the design process for this project. So admin completing 100% plans and specifications, permit applications, and continuing that Habitat Work Group. And for this one, the project was awarded $628,637 with no match required, and the final design anticipated to be completed by October 2027.
Questions? Comments? We'll go ahead, and I move to authorize the mayor to sign the King County Flood Control District Cooperative Grant Agreement in the amount of $628,637 for the Lower Russell Levy Habitat Area A Project, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank the department, the work done on those grants. Now we're going to hear from Lucy Wu. This one is information only on our trip reduction program.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lucy Wu, and I am the Transportation Planner and Coordinator for CTR, which is Commute Trip Reduction. And today, I'm here to share an update about the program. So I'll go over the CTR law and the program, the work sites we're currently working with in Kent, and a few of the requirements, which include the survey and the four-year plan. So the CTR law was adopted back in 1991 as part of the Washington Clean Air Act, and it was developed to reduce greenhouse gases and improve air quality and also to reduce traffic congestion and energy consumption. The law affects work sites here in Kent with 100 or more full-time employees, and they need to arrive onsite or start their workday at least two days out of the week between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM. And the CTR program came out of this law, and it matches a goal that the city has in the Transportation Master Plan, which is to use the resources and the infrastructure we have more efficiently in terms of transportation. So a little bit about Kent's involvement with CTR. Kent has been a part of CTR for over 20 years, and in the recent years, around 25 or 30 companies and agencies in Kent have been CTR-affected. And to name a few, there have been Boeing, Blue Origin, Oberto, and REI. And currently, the transportation planning team is administering the CTR program, which includes myself and David Pang. So this is a list of the CTR-affected work sites in Kent. There are 21 companies, and some of the previous companies are no longer considered CTR-affected because they have left Kent or they don't meet the qualification anymore. And this is the CTR program cycle that we have in the upcoming years. Two major requirements for work sites to participate in are the survey and the program report. The survey is a survey administered to all of the employees at the work sites, and they, it asks about their commute habits, and the program report is a report about the commuter benefits that the employer offers. And so here in 2024, we are in the midst of the surveying period, and we're also completing work on the CTR four-year plan. And the survey and the program report are required every two years, so we have them alternating for the upcoming years, and in 2029, the next CTR plan will be due. So WashDOT recommends a drive-alone rate, which is the percentage of employees that drive alone to work, and the goal for Kent is 69%. And we also have on this map the rate for our neighboring cities here in South King County. And the 69% is likely due to there being more manufacturing and industrial jobs in the city, and the survey is a way that we'll be able to track progress every year on meeting this goal. And so I mentioned earlier that we're in the middle of the surveying period, and one thing we're doing is hosting tabling events at work sites. So earlier in September, we hosted one at Amazon here with the staff in the City of Kent, and earlier today at Kent School District. And the photo on the right shows us tabling at the Amazon warehouse. And some sites will be doing online survey only, and for all of the sites that are participating, we are offering a raffle to incentivize and encourage participation from the employees, and the prizes are sourced from local Kent businesses. And this is a screenshot of the four-year plan that we are working on. It is in a question-and-answer format, which follows the template that WashDOT gives us and requires. And a new component of the plan is community engagement. So we will be conducting outreach throughout the months of October and November, and that will be in the form of in-person engagement and also online as well on the engage.kentlaw.gov website in particular. The screenshot on the right shows the CTR page, and on there will have the draft available for people to review, and they can also take a survey to share their feedback on the plan. And the plan will be submitted to WashDOT in December, and in early 2025, they will give us approval, and if that's approved, will present to council in 2025 as well. And that's all that I have for the CTR update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great question.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember.
Hey, listen, you say the DAR is, the goal is 69%?
Yes.
Where we at? Do we know where we're at today?
So we don't today because this year, we're doing the survey as a completely new baseline.
Okay.
All of the previous surveys, we won't be considering them, partially due to the pandemic.
To establish a baseline, then we go towards that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Lucy.
Thank you.
That is it for Public Works.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. With that, we are at the end of our meeting, and before we adjourn, I want to make a comment to our Public Works Department. Tonight, we heard almost $1.2 million in grants with no match. Congratulations to your team for all the hard work, Chad. And congratulations to everyone. I mean, you guys do an amazing job for, you know, bringing all the grants to our city so we can get some work done and have progress. So thank you so much. And with that, we are adjourned until 5 o'clock, 5:15 for council workshop. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned until 5 o'clock, 5:15 for council workshop. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, October 1st. We have one item on our agenda, and that is our 2025-2026 biennial budget. And we have our Finance Director Paula Painter here with her presentation. Welcome.
Great, great. Thank you very much. Council President Cor, members of City Council, Mayor Ralph, happy to be here today. Last week, when we chatted, we chatted about the General Fund, did a deep dive on what changes were happening with the General Fund's budget for 2025 and 2026. This time, we're going to talk about all the other funds. So, we're going to look at our special revenue funds, enterprise funds, internal service funds. I'm also going to spend a little bit of time talking about BNO tax just for a moment, and then we'll talk about our timeline. I do know, we did receive some questions related to the budget so far. I don't have answers for those questions for this meeting. We just haven't had time to get those together, but those will be put together and out to you guys, either via workshops or other communication. And we'll make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to see the questions that are being asked. So, I do encourage you guys, if you do have questions, be sure to send them our way. So, let's go ahead and jump into looking at our special revenue funds. So, when you start looking at the 2024 adjusted budget, 2025 proposed, and the 2026 proposed budget, you'll see some of these budgets are pretty similar. But I do want to talk a little bit about some of the changes that you see here. The Street Operating Fund, right now, you'll notice for 2024, it's $21.5 million budget, and we're looking at going down to a $21.3 million budget for '25, and a $21.2 million for '26. A lot of this has to do with the fact that debt is getting paid off in that fund. So, some of the revenues that go into the fund are transfers, a subsidy from the General Fund. We'll talk a little bit about that when I dive deeper into that on another slide. The Left One Retirees Benefit Account, you'll see that there's a budget of $1.6 million in 2024, and it drops pretty significantly in 2025. That is because this fund has had a pretty high budget for quite some time, and we are not spending at that budget. The members of that plan are going down, and so the expenditures related to that as well are decreasing. And so, we are adjusting it. Just to give you some perspective, we did leave some wiggle room in there because we sometimes are not certain of what kind of bills will be coming through. Right now, we're projecting to have spent less than $1 million in 2024. And then also in 2023, I think we were at about $950,000 that we spent out of that fund. You'll also notice a decline in the '25 and '26 budget compared to '24 for our Lodging Tax Fund. And you may recall, with the second quarter budget amendment, we did adjust the Lodging Tax Grants by $30,000. So, 2024 is a little higher than we would typically see on that. Our Capital Resources Fund, this is the fund that funds all of our capital projects that are more general government-related. And you'll notice in 2024 that those amounts are higher than they are in '25 and '26. There's a couple of different reasons for that. One of those is, we did allocate out some additional dollars for the Keehawke Project in 2020... Excuse me, in 2024, as well as monies, $5 million for the facility's reinvestment. And as you know, we have a couple of pretty good-sized projects going on right now, so there weren't as many requests for additional dollars out of that Capital Resources Fund like we had seen back in 2024. The City Arts Program, that is, you're seeing the budgets going down with that. And of course, the first question that I asked is, if this is $2 per capita, how is this dollar amount going down? Didn't make any sense. And I had to be reminded that there is actually some of the $2 per capita that is budgeted within the General Fund. So, what you see here is whatever is remaining. So, yes, it did go up $2 per capita, but the fund itself, which gets the remaining dollars, it's lower because of the costs that were in the General Fund related to that. And then finally, we do have the Showware Operating Fund. If you do recall, the Showware Center did receive shuttered venues operator grants back in 2021, maybe '20, can't remember the exact year. Those dollars have been used for some of these capital projects-related things, but we've also used some of those dollars to help support the Showware Center operating budget. So, what you're seeing here is us truing up the budget for the needed dollars to be able to cover the costs of the Showware Center. The cost for showware, just like everywhere else, staffing costs have grown greatly. That's everywhere. Building insurance on a building like that has gone up significantly in the last five years as well, and then just the cost of operations in general. So, looking at the major revenues, the Street Operating Fund does receive a General Fund subsidy, and that subsidy is going up by $171,000 for 2025. However, it's decreasing by $418,000, and that's because of the debt service that is going away. It's going to be paid off. The Street Fund owes will be paid off in 2025. So, that's why you're seeing a reduction in the subsidy there. The Capital Resources Fund, you're going to see increases in our property tax. It seems to come out to about 2% increase compared to 2024. Again, that's 1% plus new construction, so that's how that worked out. Of that property tax, the Capital Resources Fund does get 52.5% of all of the revenue that we receive as a city. The remainder of that stays within the General Fund. Sadly, streamlined sales tax is slated to go away after we receive the June 2026 payment, so that's why you're seeing a decline in the revenue there for the Capital Resources Fund. We have seen declines in school zone camera revenues, and so we've adjusted the budget to reflect what we're actually seeing come in. As you recall, we did have last year, new red light cameras that were put throughout various areas in the city.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, October 1st. We have one item on our agenda, and that is our 2025-2026 biennial budget. And we have our Finance Director Paula Painter here with her presentation. Welcome.
Great, great. Thank you very much, Council President Cor, members of City Council, Mayor Ralph. Happy to be here today. Last week, when we chatted, we chatted about the General Fund, did a deep dive on what changes were happening with the General Fund's budget for 2025 and 2026. This time, we're going to talk about all the other funds. So, we're going to look at our special revenue funds, enterprise funds, internal service funds. I'm also going to spend a little bit of time talking about BNO tax just for a moment, and then we'll talk about our timeline. I do know, we did receive some questions related to the budget so far. I don't have answers for those questions for this meeting. We just haven't had time to get those together, but those will be put together and out to you guys, either via workshops or other communication. And we'll make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to see the questions that are being asked. So, I do encourage you guys, if you do have questions, be sure to send them our way. So, let's go ahead and jump into looking at our special revenue funds. So, when you start looking at the 2024 adjusted budget, 2025 proposed, and the 2026 proposed budget, you'll see some of these budgets are pretty similar, but I do want to talk a little bit about some of the changes that you see here. The Street Operating Fund right now, you'll notice, for 2024, it's $21.5 million budget, and we're looking at going down to a $21.3 million budget for '25, and a $21.2 million for '26. A lot of this has to do with the fact that debt is getting paid off in that fund. So, some of the revenues that go into the fund are transfers, a subsidy from the General Fund. We'll talk a little bit about that when I dive deeper into that on another slide. The Left One Retirees Benefit Account, you'll see that there's a budget of $1.6 million in 2024, and it drops pretty significantly in 2025. That is because this fund has had a pretty high budget for quite some time, and we are not spending at that budget. The members of that plan are going down, and so the expenditures related to that as well are decreasing. And so, we are adjusting it. Just to give you some perspective, we did leave some wiggle room in there because we sometimes are not certain of what kind of bills will be coming through. Right now, we're projecting to have spent less than $1 million in 2024, and then also in 2023, I think we were at about $950,000 that we spent out of that fund. You'll also notice a decline in the '25 and '26 budget compared to '24 for our lodging tax fund. And you may recall, with the second quarter budget amendment, we did adjust the lodging tax grants by $30,000. So, 2024 is a little higher than we would typically see on that. Our Capital Resources Fund, this is the fund that funds all of our capital projects that are more general government-related, and you'll notice in 2024 that those amounts are higher than they are in '25 and '26. There's a couple of different reasons for that. One of those is, we did allocate out some additional dollars for the Keelock project in 2020, excuse me, in 2024, as well as monies, $5 million for the facility's reinvestment. And as you know, we have a couple of pretty good-sized projects going on right now, so there weren't as many requests for additional dollars out of that Capital Resources Fund like we had seen back in 2024. The City Arts Program, that is, you're seeing the budgets going down with that, and of course, the first question that I asked is, if this is $2 per capita, how is this dollar amount going down? Didn't make any sense, and I had to be reminded that there is actually some of the $2 per capita that is budgeted within the General Fund. So, what you see here is whatever is remaining. So, yes, it did go up $2 per capita, but the fund itself, which gets the remaining dollars, it's lower because of the costs that were in the General Fund related to that. And then finally, we do have the Showware Operating Fund. If you do recall, the Showware Center did receive shuttered venues operator grants back in 2021, maybe '20, can't remember the exact year. Those dollars have been used for some of these capital projects-related things, but we've also used some of those dollars to help support the Showware Center operating budget. So, what you're seeing here is us truing up the budget for the needed dollars to be able to cover the costs at the Showware Center. The cost for Showware, just like everywhere else, staffing costs have grown greatly. That's everywhere. Building insurance on a building like that has gone up significantly in the last five years as well, and then just the cost of operations in general. So, looking at the major revenues, the Street Operating Fund does receive a General Fund subsidy, and that subsidy is going up by $171,000 for 2025. However, it's decreasing by $418,000, and that's because of the debt service that is going away. It's going to be paid off. The Street Fund owes will be paid off in 2025, so that's why you're seeing a reduction in the subsidy there. The Capital Resources Fund, you're going to see increases in our property tax. It seems to come out to about 2% increase compared to 2024. Again, that's 1% plus new construction, so that's how that worked out. Of that property tax, the Capital Resources Fund does get 52.5% of all of the revenue that we receive as a city. The remainder of that stays within the General Fund. Sadly, streamlined sales tax is slated to go away after we receive the June 2026 payment, so that's why you're seeing a decline in the revenue there for the Capital Resources Fund. We have seen declines in school zone camera revenues, and so we've adjusted the budget to reflect what we're actually seeing come in. As you recall, we did have last year, new red light cameras that were put throughout various areas in the city. When we did the budget for 2024 for those revenues, we really weren't sure what those revenues were going to look like, and we're ultimately truing this up to how revenues are coming in. So, we're going to see an additional $700,000 in red light camera revenue coming in in 2025.
Paula, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you say that the Capital Resources Fund gets 52% of the property tax?
Yes, 52.5%.
And that's only $359,000?
No, that's the increase. So, what you're looking at here is just the increase from 2024 to 25.
I got scared. Okay.
I'm just trying to draw out some of those major differences in the budget from one year to the next. Yeah. All right. So, now looking at the expenditure side of the House, when you're looking at the Street Fund, there is a GIS allocation. So, in 2024, GIS moved from IT to Public Works. Within the 2024 budget, we did not have enough data yet to be able to allocate out those costs for GIS. We now have that data, and so with the '25- '26 budget, we're allocating out those costs, so you're going to see the reduction there. The Street Fund also is extending the Civil Engineer Design Position for the next biennium because of the projects and the grants that they've been able to receive, needing to keep that position onboard a little bit longer. That position is budgeted in the Operating Fund, but will be charged out to projects. The Capital Resources Fund, we are converting a GIS analyst position that they have for the Parks Department into a permanent position, so that is going to have an increased expense within the Capital Resources Fund. You only see about $87,000 for 2025 because that position was slated to go through May of 2025. There are transfers out of the Capital Resources Fund for a variety of projects, including the roundabout design projects, East Hill North Community Park, road improvement projects, property abatements, the Keelock project. What you see there is the Parks portion of that, and then the JDE replacement. That is not what our finance, JDE is our financial system. That's not what it's going to cost to replace, but that is just earmarking dollars knowing that we do need to move that project forward. For our Criminal Justice Fund, we are going to continue the car per officer program, getting some additional cars. So, there's $261,000 and $267,000 budgeted for that included in that, and they're budgeted to be using the school zone camera revenues. Three of those vehicles will be dedicated to the new police officer and the two new sergeant positions that are included in the 2025-26 budget.
The, yes. So, for the school zone camera revenue is going down, so is there still enough in there to fund?
There is. We're not funding it at the rate we were funding this car per officer program. In fact, we're going to have to go out one more biennium, '27, '28, before we'll get the last of those vehicles. They're very close, but we're not quite there yet.
Thank you.
Yeah. We will be shifting 75% of the Resource Coordinator position to the opioid funding, and opioid funding right now is sitting in this Criminal Justice Fund, so if you're wondering why that's there. And the Resource Coordinator position is the position that supports our community court function. They, there are dollars also for a replacement of three drones in both 2025 and 2026, as well as the FUSIS Crime Center software.
Paula, going back to the Resource Coordinator, because that's coming out of the opioid funding, you said?
Yes.
Does that just get us through '26?
No, there, this one is going, it's going to be 75% of it. We're projected to keep it in there through the life of those opioid settlements. In fact, I do have a slide that I will be sharing with you, and a couple more, that'll show you kind of the outline of that.
And how long that money will be available to us?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of questions, please.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I need to back up. So, the JDE program, what systems sit on it today? Do you know, we're going to replace it, but what's?
Yeah, so that has all of our financial systems, so all of our capital assets, our accounts receivable, accounts payable, pretty much every, every basic accounting function with exception to obviously payroll, since we have that in Workday, and then also like utility billing, that is a separate system as well.
And what's the timeline for replacing that system, though?
Really, it needs to be replaced more sooner than later. It's something that should be on the docket for this upcoming biennium, and the reason for that is JDE, the version of JDE that we're on is outdated, and it doesn't have all of the necessary security updates that we should be having to ensure that we're in a good space. We have options to be able to look at whether we want to upgrade to a newer version of JDE, or if we want to go with another program like Workday, or Munis, or Tyler, or one of those systems.
I know we've been talking about it for a while. On a mic, is, is on that, Mike shows a roadmap a couple of months ago. Is that JDE replacement is part of that roadmap?
Was that on that roadmap? I don't know that I saw that, but it has been on that roadmap for a while. We've been, we have been talking about it. Part of the slowdown, in all honesty with this, is that through COVID, finance was pretty short-staffed, and we didn't have the people in place to be able to work on that project on our end. So, now that we're fully staffed and people have been here long enough to understand what our, how our systems are working, that's something that we can spend a little bit more time on as well.
I'll follow Mike afterwards. My other question on the opioid funding, is there a separate line item that show what's in that bucket today?
There is. There's going to be a couple, I think, two more slides down, and we'll be able to see a little bit more about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right. Going back to the Human Services Fund, you're going to see that there's a negative $410,000. Ultimately, we did have a budget in there that we haven't been using, so what we're doing is reversing that, that budget to be able to budget in the shift of some General Fund expenditures to the Human Services Fund, and also Project B Free.
Sorry, what are the General Fund expenditures moving to Human Services Fund?
So, those are part of our Human Services divi, the Parks Department is going to be allocating portions of Human Services over to the Human Services Fund. This is going to be able to take, take advantage of the House Bill 1590 funds that we have sitting there that are available for use.
Thank you.
All right. So, opioid discussion here really quick. So, at least 70% of the funding that we are awarded needs to be spent on opioid remediation efforts, defined in the settlement agreement as care, treatment, and other programs or expenditures, including expenditures for past such programs, moving on, designed to address the misuse and abuse of opioid products, treat or mitigate opioid use or related disorders, and mitigates other alleged effects of, including those injured as a result of the opioid pandemic. So, there's a very high level of allowable uses, and in fact, they do have something that kind of breaks it down into subcategories of areas in which these funds can be spent. When we start looking at the opioid funds, we have 17 years in which we're expecting to be able to, expecting to receive revenue related to these opioid settlements. Just to give you a quick heads up, the last two columns, we grouped the years 2030 to '34 together, just so we could actually read it, and then we grouped 2035 to 2038 together. Otherwise, it was getting really difficult to follow. You can see for our revenues, the actual revenues that we've received in since, from 2022 to 2024. And then, for the revenues that we do receive in, we need to pay 10% admin fee to King County. And so, for, so far, effect, through September of this year, so September 30th, we would have paid $62,471 for that 10% admin fee. We do have anticipated, so far, they've spent $80 at services at community court, or for items at community court. We have, and put in there, an anticipated amount of an additional 10, up to $10,000 that they may spend. Technically, when we created the budget, we allocated $99,900 in 2024 to community court for them to be able to spend there. It doesn't look like they're going to spend that much in 2024. The very, the next line down, you'll see, for that year, revenues, less expenditures, what's that net amount, but then the very bottom line shows you this cumulative balance that we have after every given year. And as you can see, as we get through 2038, if we continue to spend where we allocate 75% of that Resource Coordinator, we assume that they'll have $15,000 or so in expenses related to community court, and then obviously the admin fee through there. We would be expending all of that at the end of 2038. Yes.
Question, Paula. So, the Resource Coordinator, is that a temp position in our community court right now?
It is a position within our community court right now.
Okay. And then looking at it as you keep going into the years, in 2030 to '35, 70% of Resource Coordinator is $750,000?
That's for, the combination of all of those years. So,
Okay, okay, that's, okay.
It's the combination of all of those years, yes.
I was like, hmm.
That's the cost just for five years. And like I said, we had to do it because it was just too big for the screen, for making it readable. But yeah, so that's five years' worth of cost.
Okay. So, when the requirement is, they're doing 70% of the work for opioids, I'm assuming that is this person's primary?
Yeah, they, based on the work that's being done there, and I think that Margaret may even be able to speak better to this if you have more questions related to that, but the amount of work that this person, this Resource Coordinator does has so much to do with the impacts of this opioid pandemic that's been out there, and so it's taking up a lot more of their time, and so they've been able to justify that. And they've broke it out into like different categories of how, how is this person helping with this? And so, they've kind of broke that out percentage-wise, and I didn't bring that with me to, to explain how they were meeting that requirement of 75%.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, it's safe to say for the opioid funding, we got three buckets, where this money's going to, pretty much?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's one of the three. Then I'm assuming it's probably sometime later down the road, because this is critical about how this is having an impact to the communities. I'm assuming sometime down the road, there'll be some report out, just seeing how it's going.
Yes, yep. All right. Do we have any more questions on the opioid funding? Because this is about as, the last slide on this one. All right. So, our enterprise funds for water, for water, sewer, and drainage, for 2025, you're going to see a pretty good-sized increase in their budget, but then it drops back down in 2026, and that is because of the additional dollars that they're contributing for the Keelock project. And so, that's why you're seeing the big bump there. The solid waste, when you look at the solid waste, it, in 2024, it had a budget of nearly $1.3 million, and it drops down to nearly $1 million. A lot of that had to do with the fact that in 2024, it did have a carryforward budget of $161,000, which was for a recycling grant, so they had to move that forward to be able to expend those dollars. And then you will see an increase in the golf complex budget for 2025, and that has to do with increased budgets related to temps and overtime. When we look at the major changes to the revenue, you're going to see increases in water, sewer, and drainage based on, of one point for, for water, it's $1.2 million in 2025 compared to 2024, and that is because of a 3.6% adjustment for CPIW. As you know, we increase our utility rates based on CPIW. And then there's also some minor adjustments there for volume, so how much water is being used, or people are incurring charges. And then the sewer adjustment, you're going to see sewer adjust, increase by $2.8 million in 2025 compared to 2024. There is the adjustment of the 3.6% increase for Kent, but also in there is a 5.75 increase from King County, which is that pass-through. So, we collect it, we have to show it as revenue, and then we turn around and we give it to King County, so it becomes an expense for us. This is, the pass-through to King County is the largest expense that comes out of this fund, and to act back, it's the majority of the expense that comes out of this fund. And then the other expense that you're going to see is for increases in, for the golf course, for increases in green fees and range fees, and that's really just bringing it up to their, their current trend right now. From the expenditure side, like I mentioned before, Water Fund had nearly $7 million that it transferred, is going to be transferring out to the Keelock project, and same with Sewer, it will be transferring out $3 million for the Keelock project. If you look at the King County pass-through, you can see $2.1 million is going to be passed through to King County in an expended, in addition to what was already in the 2024 budget, in addition to nearly $2 million additional in 2026. The Drainage Fund, the Drainage Fund is adding a maintenance worker tube position at $123,000, and they're going to offset that by some part-time salaries, so that's how they are bringing that forward. They also are going to be purchasing an excavator at $315,000. There is the floodplain certification engineer that ECD is having, getting this year, and that, 20% of that is going to be charged to the Drainage Fund. And then, obviously, we again have the transfer out to the Keelock at $3.1 million. Utility clearing, the utility clearing fund is really a fund that's used by finance, at least this portion of it, for our meter readers, utility billing, and also customer service, those who are supporting the utility billing functions. We will be adding a meter reader this year. The offset to this is going to be reimbursed out of the Water Fund. Okay, so now we are moving on to our internal service funds. For our Fleet Fund, you can see the 2024 budget is higher than the 2025 budget, and the reason for that is we had $2.7 million in carryforwards from 2023. These are vehicles that have been ordered and are not yet in, so we needed to carry forward those dollars into 2024. The 2025 budget, which is a little higher than the 2026 budget, that's because in 2025, there's $861,000 that is included in that budget, and that budget is to replace equipment for both Parks and Public Works. This is larger equipment, and we're using fund balance, it's a one-time thing, using fund balance to get those items replaced. For multimedia, there is an increase in the multimedia budget. Right now, there is one position that's being paid for out of the General Fund. Right now, there is one position that's being paid for out of the general fund that really should be being, being paid for out of multimedia, since that's really what that person is doing. So that's what you're seeing there for the change in their budget, is the shift from a general fund over to multimedia. For facilities, you're going to see a decline in their budget. We really haven't taken anything away from them. What that is, is back in 2024, there were some one-time transfers out of the operating fund into some lifecycle projects. So that's why you're seeing higher expenditure in 2024 than you would be seeing in 2025 and Next on there are our variety of insurance funds, unemployment, workers comp, health and wellness, liability and property tax insurance. And with those, I'll kind of, I will jump forward just a little bit. We'll talk more in depth about those. There's not too much to say really about them, just continuing with their general funding of them. For major revenues in our information technology fund, you're going to see, compared to 2024, an additional $1.1 million in 2025 for department contributions. And those department contributions have to do with a couple of different things. Additional cost for maintenance and subscriptions for technology, that seems to be a growing thing everywhere. They've changed, in general, the technology world has changed how they are charging people for the technology they use, and it's becoming more expensive. The other thing that's impacted this is the information technology fund receives cable utility tax revenues. Those revenues have been declining. As those revenues decline, it becomes, in order to keep that fund solvent, we have to reach out to departments to cover those additional costs, because we're not able to get the cable utility tax in. Our, and you can see the transfer in from cable utility, it dropped almost $370,000 just in 2025 compared to 2024. For our facilities fund, you're going to see an increase in department contributions. And this has to do a lot with the increased utility costs, both in electric and in gas. And it also is to be able to ensure that they can extend the capital projects manager. And then the workers comp liability and property tax insurance, we did list these. These are ones where we have been making pretty significant adjustments over the years to them. I'm just outlining what those increases to those funds are looking like. These are contributions from other departments to workers comp liability and property tax Moving on to the expenditure side of the House, for fleet services, again, we have the major equipment replacement for both parks and public works that are included in the expenditure side of the budget. The information technology, their expenditures have gone up $286,000 in 2025, related to the maintenance and subscription expenses. Our facilities fund, they've extended their capital facilities manager position, so that this temporary position, it has been extended out, so you'll see some additional dollars there. And then for our workers comp and liability funds, there are increases to premiums and judgments. So $275,000 increase in workers comp and $689,000 increase in premiums and judgments for the liability fund in 2025. Last week, when we met, we had a conversation about some of the assumptions that were done for our insurance fund. So I thought maybe we would take a minute just to kind of show you what we look at and how we make determinations on what we want to do with these funds. Trying to predict two years out is really difficult. In fact, sometimes trying to predict one year out is a little bit difficult. So we decided to bring the workers comp fund up here just for something to, to look at, just to give us some perspective. If you see, in 2021, we started the beginning working capital at nearly $2.3 million. We did bring in revenue of one mil, just over $1 million, but had expenditures of almost $1.8 million. That was a 35% increase in expenditures compared to the year before. You're going to see this thing called ultimate loss adjustment. Sometimes you'll hear me call it IBNR. Ultimately, what that is, is we carry on our books a liability. So we know that there's going to be claims that are out there that we're going to end up having to pay. When you compare what we had on the books for those outstanding claims from the prior year to the current year, whatever that difference is, it is what goes in this ultimate loss adjustment. It's not our full ultimate loss, it's just the difference between it from one year to the next. So we had, and that's an expense. When you look at that as a positive number there, that's another expense. So ultimately, our expenses resulted in us decreasing the fund balance by nearly $854,000, leaving us ending working capital of $1.4 million. We have a target that we must maintain in these funds. And our goal is to, based on an actuarial report, leave a working capital, in 2021, it was almost, well, it was $1.966 million that we wouldn't have. And you can see there, we were short. So going into '22, we still needed to bump up our revenues. You can see how greatly our revenues jumped in order to offset this increase of 25% in expenditures that we had realized. You can see at the end of the day, we did have just above our working, required working capital, which is great. But what you're going to see from these, these trends, you can kind of follow this through, you can see that we're slowly declining on our need to subsidize. Why? Because we've built up such a big fund balance. When we add, when we add 10% to this, it's different than when we added 10% to $1 million, you know, back in 2021. So our need to be able to contribute these dollars are going down. 2023, our expenses increased by 10%. And you can see our ultimate loss went down, it was a negative, so that was reducing our expenses. We are now doing a lot of guesswork on what our ultimate loss is going to be. We have budgeted $555,000 in ultimate loss for '24, and $500,000 and $550,000 for '25, '26. So we're keeping that number really high, because we don't know where it's going to come in at. We have seen that ultimate loss number, you know, you can see 620,000 back in '22, but then 85,000. So we feel like we've given ourselves a little buffer room there with keeping that IBNR, ultimate loss adjustment, high. Looking at '25, we do want to make sure that we're not going to fall below what we know our, our, our ending working capital should be at '24. We don't know what the actuary is going to say about '25 and '26 yet. So we did end up needing to look at, we needed to increase our expenditure, our expenditures increased by 24%, but you can see, we didn't really need to increase the contributions by all that much in order to keep us moving forward. Going into 2026, we're seeing these declines, we see things kind of shift, and they kind of roll and sway, where sometimes they're up higher, sometimes they're lower. We felt like going into '26 with a 5% increase in expenditures seemed like a reasonable thing based on the data that we have. And we've given ourselves such cushion between the ultimate loss adjustments for the last three years. So we feel like we're in a good spot. The nice thing is, is that as we have more information during the 2026 mid-biennium budget adjustment, we can true that up if we need to true it up. But that's kind of what we walk through when we're starting to look at this, about how much wiggle room did we leave ourselves, and do we want to earmark more dollars? Do you have any questions on that?
Makes sense.
All right. BNO tax maximum cap. So in this budget, this budget adjust, this, excuse me, this biennial budget does three things with BNO tax. First, it is enacting something that was authorized back in 2018, which was an increase from 36 cents to 48 cents per square foot for our square footage tax that would result in an increase in revenue of about $3 million. The second thing it did is it did increase manufacturing rate from .001 to .00125, which at the end of the day is resulting in $845,000 in additional revenue for here. One of the areas that we kind of grappled with a little bit had to do with this BNO tax maximum cap. And this is on retailing grocery receipts. So back in 2018, when we approved the square footage, we also approved a maximum cap to go into effect back in 2022. So we've been doing this now for a couple of years and trying to, to monitor this and work with it. It's a little bit of a process to do. So we thought this was a good time, since we're looking at the BNO tax, we already know we're doing adjustments, we're increasing rates for the square footage. Let's see, is there anywhere else we should be looking at for the BNO tax? And this cap was one of these things that just seemed to rise to the top. For one, we're trying to add CPI to all of these fees that we, that we have. And this is one of these ones that we did not do that. In fact, the $20 million cap, in today's numbers, was nearly $26 million if we applied the CPI like we do for some of our other fees. So if we left things the same as is, it wouldn't add any additional revenue. Looking at scenario B, this is the $25 million cap, that's the one that's in the budget. The one that's in the budget brings in almost $87,000. It is only taxing retail sales grocery receipts up to $25 million. The other scenario that we looked at was, hey, if we kept that $20 million cap, and we said anything, if, if a person hits $100 million, anything above that $100 million, what would that bring in? Well, we found that that only brought in $60,000. So that really wasn't doing much for us either. The option D is another item that we looked at, and that is, you keep that $20 million cap. And you have a cap that if a person hits $100 million in grocery receipts, these are going to be your large corporate businesses, that we tax them on all of that. If they can reach, if they do reach this tax, they would cap, tax on all of that. That would generate about an additional $300,000 per year if we were to do that. We, one of the things that I will say is Kent is unique. We are the only city that I have been able to find that actually has a cap on the grocery receipts. The only other city that comes too close to this is the city of Renton. The city of Renton doesn't have it on their grocery receipts. They do have a cap on the amount you can be taxed. And the amount they can be taxed is adjusted every year by inflation, and the 2024 number is $11 million. And I'm going to tell you now, we don't have a single person even close to that. So, I mean, to me, that's like a dream world, it's like, wow. But we don't have that. So that is not even comparable to what we have. And in fact, even if we say, oh, we're going to say, we're going to do $11 million, that would benefit no one ever in the city of Kent at the moment. So, but looking at this, these were the options we explored. I wanted to throw in front of you, because we still have a structural imbalance within our budget. I'd love to shrink that a little bit. And I know that if, if we were to look at potentially that scenario D, we're looking at, if you're getting $100 million, you get taxed on all, if you're making over $100 million, you get taxed on all of the monies that you're making. It would make a big difference to our community without hurting the small people, the smaller businesses.
Councilmember Troutner, followed by Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. So, for example, if we went with D, a majority, it wouldn't affect a majority of our businesses, it would only affect those big retail businesses.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Paula, so why did we go with B instead of D?
That was the conservative measure. When we put the budget together, we were trying to be conservative and keeping with the original intent of the, of the establishment of the cap, which was, we, we want to, we wanted a $20 million cap. But the thing was, is we hadn't applied CPI. So what I was bringing forth is, let's get this up to CPI, but then have a discussion later about what do we think of this other option?
And we got together last week and had some additional conversation about what was being left on the table. I'm just going to be honest, we sat down with economic development and finance, and there's, there's a chunk of money there, and it's, to Councilmember Troutner's point, it's a small number of businesses, but it's a big, makes a big difference to our, our general fund, and, and potentially what we are going to have to take out of our reserves to fill that gap.
Councilwoman Boyd, followed by Councilmember Boyd.
I like to think this answered my question from last week, but that's okay.
Absolutely, the meeting was absolutely in response to the question you asked last week.
Yes, absolutely, it was.
Thank you. I, I definitely, this is the right way to do, right? And we got some large corporation, a handful, right, you know, that's probably not paying their share, right? And I think, you know, to me, you know, $100 million, you're talking about these big corporations is probably nationwide, right? So it's not going to have a huge impact. I think this is to give us opportunity really to help us with the structure debt. Because we do have a, a real structural imbalance going to hit us sooner or later. And I think as soon we start preparing for that, I'm not a big tax guy, but I also believe that people should pay their fair amount of taxes. And I think this should, to me, seem like a real fair thing to do. So definitely will support option D.
Councilwoman Boyd, followed by Councilwoman Larmour, please.
Okay, I was looking at a scenario D. Have, have you looked at how many, I mean, what's the percentage of business that make $100 million? I mean, it's like, is it half 50%, 70%, or 80%? I mean.
Well, it's a very small number. I want to say it is like a handful.
Like a handful?
Yeah.
So then back to what Councilmember Boyd was saying, then, then there are some people that won't be paying their taxes, right? Their BNO taxes, right? Because some are making more or making less? Or making less, let's say they're making less than $100 million.
Yep.
So how?
There's a difference.
Yep, they'll be paying on the $20 million. Yep. Yes.
And we have a small, small amount of people that are doing that small percentage.
Yeah.
Clarification point. Councilmember Boyd, we do have a small, a very small business threshold, so it's 250. So any business that, that's bringing in under $250,000 in grocery receipts does not pay BNO. Otherwise, everybody pays, it's just at what, at what level. So it's, you don't have to make $100 million before you have to pay BNO that hundred, in this scenario, that $100 million just means you're not subject to that cap.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Larmour, please.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate, I found it really interesting, I didn't realize it really long ago, the city set had a cap. So I think this is a, you know, I feel a bit of a vote with option D, because I think it's, it's fair and it's equitable with the other cities, what others are doing. So I have no problem with that.
Councilmember Michelle, followed by Councilmember Fincher, please. Paula, did we look at if the maximum cap was 25 million, and then 100 million? So option D, but with a 25 million?
I did not look at that. I did not. So that would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Though, I'll add that to my questions then.
Okay, okay.
Councilwoman Fincher, please.
Thank you. I would also guess, I, I would go along with this, because I would also guess that those larger companies are also a bigger draw on city, on the infrastructure, on the resources that we have, whether it be the streets, whether it be, you know, any number of things, they would be a bigger draw also, and not necessarily covering their share.
Thank you, any other comments? Looks like you kind of have an answer and something to move forward with.
Absolutely.
And some questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussion on this? Any more discussion on this? Because we have now reached the timeline. So for the timeline, obviously, we had a workshop today, and at our council meeting, we are going to have our first public hearing on the budget and the CIP. We will have another workshop on October 8th. That would be a special one. And then another one on the 15th. This gives us time to make sure that we get all of the questions addressed that we have, and anything else. I do know that we're going to have a special guest on the 8th. That's going to be Kristen, who is going to talk about the comp plan. And then on the 15th, we're going to have Marina Hansen, who is going to talk about human services. So those individuals will be joining us those days. Again, we're going to look to bring to the committee of the whole a packet, so hopefully we can make sure we can get all the questions addressed. So if you do have them, please send them off to Michelle and I, so we can get them logged and off to you. And then we will adopt, after the 5th, we won't do anything else with budget. We're just going to hold tight, but we will bring it to the council meeting in December and adopt the budget there. And that is all I have, unless you guys have more questions?
Yes, Paula, I'd like to say that you and your team have done extraordinary work up until now, and it's seemed like you still have more work to do, painstaking work.
Yeah, thank you.
And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. As we all know, we'll be sending our questions over to Paula if you have them, and we will see you, well, tonight, and then at the next workshop, so. We are adjourned until 7 o'clock for council meeting. Thank you so much.
Stick into the major changes that we're proposing for transportation element, then we'll do the same for parks and recreation. And finally, we'll discuss the integration of how we're taking our previous human service element and really integrating it throughout the rest of the comprehensive plan. Project schedule, we are marching away. So we are in the in-between, getting ready. Right now, I think we've had every element come across my desk at least twice for proofing before it goes into its final formatting, ready for a draft release to the public. We will be releasing the draft comprehensive plan and including some online engagement with that effort, as well as the final EIS, which preps us then for the adoption of several different ordinances related to the comprehensive plan, CEPAT infill exemption, and other rezone work. So a reminder that we did a substantial revision to how we're organizing the layout of the comprehensive plan. You may recall, previously, it had 15 different goals and vision statements in the very beginning, and they were all laudable and good, but they were really pretty individually sector-specific. And so what we did is we reorganized so that we have a vision and five guiding principles that are informing each of the elements, then the elements each support across those guiding principles as well. And so then each element under that talks about how it relates to the other elements in the plan, the other supporting functional plans that support it, and then it gets into conditions of Kent today, what we expect for Kent tomorrow and the next 20 years, and then the supporting goals and policies. These are the elements that we have discussed together. So you'll notice that housing is in green. We are just going to have that at workshop tonight. And then sometime in October, TBD, depending on budget, timing, and availability, we'll be bringing climate and shoreline to you all. So after tonight, we'll be in a really good spot. Transportation. So we'll start with transportation element, a little bit of a look of where we're at now. Right now, the transportation element has five goals and 69 policies. The transportation element is a little bit unique because when we adopted the transportation master plan in 2021, we actually repealed the existing transportation element and said, we're going to put the TMP goals and policies as a placeholder until we come back at a future date for the comprehensive plan periodic update. And so if you look at the comp plan right now, it actually includes the full transportation master plan. And that was by design for a stopgap period. Because there was so much good work that was done in that plan, we wanted to make sure we were recognizing the transformation into a multimodal level of service network that recognizes the importance of a variety of different modes to get around Kent. And so the TMP really, it built on previous efforts, but it really set a new course for how we're doing transportation planning in the city. So it has that layered network approach, looking at a variety of different modes. And so what we're aiming to do for this comprehensive plan is say, TMP, you are a functional plan that implements the comprehensive plan. You are great as-is. We're going to put you back into your functional plan category, and we're going to have the important pieces that needed to be updated during the comprehensive plan process back as its own standalone element. So if you think about that inverted triangle that I've talked about, instead of doing a separate effort, because we knew this one was coming along, we kind of did a control, play, save, and now we're going to put it back so that we have that hierarchy of plans. But really, the big thing to note is that what we did in 2021, and I say we, I was not here, what our wonderful Parks and Rec, ECD, and Public Works was leading the effort, what they did when they were working on this as a staff and came to you as a city, what they did is really an overhaul of all of the goals and policies. So all those goals and policies are going to be in our transportation element. There's some minor adjustments to address things that PSRC and the county were still working out since 2021. We also are adding in a new policy to address Target Zero, which is the plan that's being led by David Payne, and it's that goal to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries. And we also are adding in some additional language to strengthen our coordination efforts and the need for coordination, especially as we think about things like connection to Sea-Tac Airport, or any future metro transportation improvements that may be coming into the city. So the one thing that's actually in the body of the transportation element and the narrative, so similar to capital facilities and utilities where there is an overview of documentation of all the different facilities that we have in the city, transportation also has something similar. And we have this one map that was from our 2009 TMP update, and it's a roadway functional classifications map. And what that means is it lays out how we intend different levels of roadway to be used in our city. So you may know the terms arterial or collector or principal. What we needed to do, so in 2021, when we updated our TMP, one of our action items for implementation was, we need to update this map that's in the comprehensive plan to reflect the new TMP. And so there's two major changes that are happening here. I want to get into them, but I want to highlight, they're really pretty relatively minor. So really, what this is doing is, this is the map that guides when either city projects or private design and development projects, such as a new multifamily development, are coming in, and it sets the standards of what the roadway should be. Right now, the changes that we're going to do will help bring us into better alignment with actual reality. So the first one is, we're going to be updating some of the names and classifications, which are on this far right side, to match what the state and federal classifications are. So doesn't actually change anything other than the naming terminology will be consistent across, and that's just because over time, agencies have different names for things, and so we're bringing it back into alignment. The second thing is what we are calling a right sizing of existing realities. So in 2009, the TMP did not recognize multimodal right-of-ways, it did not recognize certain aspects that are included in our new TMP. And so one of the things that I've heard is the idea of expanding roadways unlimitedly is a thing of the past. We don't have the funding for it, and it's really not a best practice anymore in transportation. It's to look at what the existing right-of-way is and meet the needs within that. And so the TMP does a really good job of identifying which roadways should be widened and which shouldn't, as opposed to saying every roadway should be really, really wide. And so really, what this is doing is, when we're having projects come before you all, or when we're working with review of private development and looking at the right-of-way, it's asking for the appropriate amount of right-of-way instead of asking for...